All right, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of Knoxville City Council and we're gonna get started. First up, we have our invocation led by Councilmember Testerman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Ryder.
Let's bow our heads. Today, let us be grateful for another day to lead and represent our great city. May each of us promote peaceful dialogue and constructive collaboration through compassionate understanding and recognizing the real needs of our people. Please give hope to those struggling for life's basic needs, for those searching for a sense of belonging, for those looking for a constructive path forward. May we show kindness and in doing so lift spirits, dissolve barriers, and cast a net of positivity that have the potential to impact and transform. Every step we take, every decision we make, let them be guided by intentions that resonate with the core of our being, and through those intentions may we cultivate a life that serves as a testament to our authenticity and the true potential that accompanies it. Amen.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Johnson, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Testerman.
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. All right, now, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our October 3 meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, that brings us to announcements and other matters. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any items for postponement?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I would like to postpone item 11L for four weeks. There's a little bit more pre-work that needs to be done before we vote on this final contract.
Okay. I have a motion to postpone item 11L, is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. 11L is postponed. Any other items to be postponed? All right, any items requested to be added by motion? All right, seeing none, we have consent items are 11P.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, that brings us to Mayor Concanon's report. Obviously, you can tell Mayor Concanon's not here with us this evening, so I'll be sitting in here with you. The mayor is attending the Bloomberg City Lab in Washington DC. This is a three-day event that brings mayors from all across the country together with prominent innovators, business leaders, urban experts, key members of the Biden administration, and others to discuss shared solutions. We look forward to hearing more about her time in DC and learning about strategies we can incorporate here in Knoxville. Also, wanted to talk about something that is going on right now. There's a lot of discussion about the ambulance service, wanted to address some questions about ambulance situation in our community. I know that many councilmembers have asked about how we can fix problems and that this is affecting our residents and as well as our police and fire employees. All of that is true, ambulance service impacts all of us, and the current services contracted by Knox County are not meeting the needs of our residents. Please know that the city administration has and will continue to work with Mayor Jacobs and his leadership team on providing this vital service all over the coming months. Knox County, with input from KPD, KFD, E911, and other city leaders, initiated a professional study that is guiding improvements in a future county contract. Mr. Brace provided each of us with a detailed information in email earlier today. If you have any questions, either he or Chief Sharp are always available to answer those questions. There are also some upcoming events to mark on your calendars. There will be on Thursday, October the 19th, we will be holding a promotional ceremony for the ranks of captain, lieutenant, and sergeant. It will be at 4:00 at the Knoxville Civic Auditorium. Also, on Wednesday, October the 25th, we're officially cutting the ribbon at the new public safety complex. The ceremony will be at 4:00 outside the main entrance on Huron Street. Members of council have been invited to join in the celebration and learn more about this investment in the North Knoxville community. Also, wanted to remind everyone to mark your calendars for October 31st for another reason other than Halloween, when we will be breaking ground on another affordable housing project in Knoxville. At 10:30 that morning, we will be meeting at 1511 Callahan Drive to celebrate the start of construction on Callahan Flats. Callahan Flats will have nearly 90 units of one, two, and three-bedroom housing options. Again, that's two weeks from today at 10:30 AM. Also, wanted to remind everyone that our 2023 city regular elections are getting started. The first day of early voting actually will start tomorrow, and it will run through November the 2nd. Be sure to take advantage of the convenient times and locations during early voting. Election Day, don't forget, is Tuesday, November 7th, and if you need more information about the election, go to knoxcounty.org/election. Before we move to councils' reports, I wanted to just remind everybody about our rules of decorum. Just a quick reminder that those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should sign up with the city recorder ahead of time. Please do not use profanity when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to those rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do so may be asked to leave, and I appreciate everyone's, in advance their respect for these rules as we go forward. That takes us to council reports. Do I have any reports from councilmembers? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just one comment and a question. Some of you may have seen that K-Town Connect program has expanded to Cumberland Avenue, so just want to give a thanks to the mayor and the administration for extending that very popular program from downtown to another densely populated part of our towns. I know the business owners along Cumberland particularly really appreciate and are excited about that service, so I think that started last week-ish, I don't know, it's fall break month, so this month it started, so just really excited to celebrate that. And I had one more kind of question related to the ambulatory services, we've all had a lot of questions about it, but it's my understanding that, or am I right, that the city, although we rely on the county to select a provider, the city has an MOU with that provider? Is that correct?
I'd have to kick this over to David Brace, Chief of Staff, excuse me, I think Mr. Sharp or Law Director Swanson may jump in. We allow them to operate within the city of Knoxville corporate limits. The contracts are all between the county and the provider, and so we are evaluating how best to integrate our expectations into an MOU right now.
Okay.
And so we're evaluating that, but essentially what we do is allow them to operate within the city.
Sure. And Chief Sharp, I guess, or Deputy Brace, would it be fair to expect that a new MOU would be drafted or some type of agreement between the provider that's selected for next year?
Yeah, Chief Sharp is working with Law Department, with Allison Dyer, and with Mr. Swanson on that.
Okay.
I think, again, the base contract between Knox County and the provider is the overriding, but our expectations would also be captured in that type of MOU.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports of council? All right, seeing none, Mr. Johnson, go ahead and get us started.
8A is a resolution confirming the appointment of Tyrone Beach to the Police Advisory and Review Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11A is a resolution rescheduling the Beer Board Meeting of December 24, 2024 to December 10, 2024, and rescheduling the City Council Meeting of December 24, 2024 to January 7, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11B is a resolution recognizing the need for additional housing and in support of the use of incentives for mixed-use residential development along city commercial corridors as an additional opportunity to address the need for increased housing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, I've got a second. We also have some folks that have signed up to speak. Speaking for, first, we have Tom Ruggles. Welcome, and you have up to five minutes.
Thank you, my name's Tom Ruggles, I live at the Hammond Apartments in Knoxville's District 2, so I'm speaking for this resolution, but a bit cautiously. I appreciate that the council brought forward this resolution and mentioned explicitly in the third paragraph that the Knoxville City Council has heard personal stories from many frustrated Knoxville residents experiencing sudden and dramatic rental increases which have caused pronounced financial hardship and stress. So I appreciate the council for formally recognizing what myself and other folks and people from the Knoxville Area Tenants Union and from SOCOM have been saying to this body for the past couple months, so I think that's a good step in the right direction. And also, you know, this resolution does also, you know, make a call for different bodies to consider options that would expand housing developments along our main corridors here, which I think is a positive statement as well. Of course, personally, I don't feel that this goes far enough, but I think this is a good place for you all to start, and I am happy about that. I just want to make clear that what this resolution is not, is not something that does make, you know, a material change immediately in the housing inventory that we have, and it doesn't create a pathway for the city to formally receive feedback from renters and other members in the community, so I'd like to, you know, see some more things that you guys can do to, you know, hear from us as renters in places that aren't just the public forum here at the city council meeting. So, those two things, and then, of course, we would definitely like to see some increase in spending towards affordable housing and homeless prevention because, you know, the dollar is always the bottom line. So yeah, this is really, you know, a nice olive branch, which is very nice, but, you know, we need a whole grove of olive trees here, so I'm happy that this step is being made, and I hope it's just one step along a long staircase ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nikki Lynn. You have up to five minutes.
Nikki Lynn, 4501 Tillery Road, the Rand at Tillery, District 5. I would also like to speak in favor of this resolution reluctantly, because, as Thomas had said previous, it doesn't have enough teeth, is what I like to say. It's a great gesture, we're very thankful that you're recognizing the elephants that have been in the room the last two and a half months, but we would have assumed that it would have more teeth, given the two and a half months that we've been talking about this issue and sharing our stories, and since 2019, when this crisis first started hitting the city hard. So, we're very thankful that you've acknowledged us and that we are looking for solutions, but we definitely urge this body to put forth some more solutions with a bit more rapidness. Also, as Thomas had mentioned, we definitely feel like we need to all be at the table when these conversations start to happen. When I say "all," I mean myself, I mean my neighbor who's a single mother who has to work three jobs and has to ensure childcare for her son, that's three. I am speaking about my neighbor who works second shift and has to sleep during the day. I'm talking about my elderly neighbor who has difficulty even getting to the bus stop. That needs to be part of these conversations, so I implore you all to make sure that the following resolutions to this one will include plans to include everyone during all of their schedule needs in that conversation. I yield the rest of my time to the floor.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Rick Roach.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. This resolution is a makeover, it's just a redo. And we've had plans on the board for certain corridor development, and I'm still not understanding through the years what that really looks like, just from personal experience. When we were doing the Empower's Zone process 20 years ago, you know, the thing I heard, because I was involved in the East Zone at the time, was Magnolia MLK Corridor, and all the resources that would be brought into the area, that would be brought to bear in terms of development. And it's gotten worse, and we had an opportunity to bring in other folks' money, you know, taxpayers' money into the process, not the city of Knoxville or county of Knox, tax dollars, and we literally did nothing. I mean, we did things, and then we brought in a grocery store, we tried to have a library centered, keep in mind, whatever you guys do, it does have to have, it has an impact, and you have to have input from the county, because we've got two governments, obviously, for the city of Knoxville, and they control some vital services, and they have to be brought in fact. Today, did they not come out with their own Knox County Housing Needs Plan? How much did they consult with you guys on all of this? That would be nice to hear you guys discuss this and bring that out in the open, if there were discussions, if there was communication, because continually what's happened is particular communities have been negatively affected by these grandiose plans, and we know what those communities are. If you don't know, come talk to me later, I'll let you know. Okay? So, you guys cannot control or have never shown a need or an ability to communicate with the people that make things happen. Those are the financial institutions who continue to discriminate. You guys have no control over those folk, and it's still going on, okay? Have you all considered what, maybe Councilwoman Parker or somebody else that may have some familiarity with it, what effect would the Community Reinvestment Act, since it's now gotten off the ground, Congress is trying to push resources into it, and what effect would that have on this resolution? That's something to consider, because that's a lot of resources that could be brought to bear potentially. You've got enough information to show the negative impacts of decisions of the city council and the Knoxville city government. You've got enough information to show it, because you can just walk out the door, and you can go east, and you can go south, and you can see the negative impacts, okay? And we've already dealt with those. You've spoken about them multiple times. So, in this whole process, yeah, it feels good when we read the resolution, you're acknowledging, okay, and yeah, I'm one of those personal stories, I've buried my soul a few times. I'm trying to connect it, I'm trying to connect it, I really am trying to connect it here, because I just feel like, again, this is just a redo, okay? Until you guys start saying, making a commitment in the budget, numbers, okay? You'll find out, you all know the need, you all know the need, and you know what the resources are that you can bring to bear. So, start crunching numbers, just like you crunch numbers for the baseball stadium, just like you crunch numbers for the new police station, crunch the numbers and see what you can come up with, okay? Because the need is apparent.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Next up is Constance Severy.
Yes, Constance Severy, Knoxville, 37914. I'm not as apologetic as the housing tenant folks, I think they missed it, I think they missed the mark on this today, because the first thing I want to bring up is the opening line of this resolution. Whereas Knoxville is in need of more housing of all types, from the most affordable to market rate, as the current supply of housing is not keeping up with the demand for housing. And, we'll pause right there on that line. First off, we have plenty of the market rate, what is missing is the affordable and... We're focusing on affordable and middle-income housing, that's what's missing from Knoxville. And you know, as always, Andrew, what is your name doing on this as this initiative? When have you advocated for housing, especially affordable housing, homeless housing in any format? You have it. So this comes off as what it looks like, opportunistic and resume building. Meanwhile, I want to take the time to acknowledge Amelia Parker, who received a federal recognition and award for her advocacy for housing and homeless housing especially. That's who should have been the leader, that's who should have wrote the initiative, and that's whose pathway you should follow, the one who's actually been federally recognized for the work. You have not been recognized, Andrew, so what is your name doing there in the first place? It's beyond me. Maybe it gives me the same vibe as what it was when you hijacked Hart and brought in your rich friends, you know, the CEOs and those type of folks who you attached immediately to your so-called resolution for a crisis response. However, we'll keep going, because the other piece of this initiative that concerns me is that you're talking about still the corridor development, which we know about that, right? That's what the whole issue has been the whole time, re-coding and the rezoning that you all have done, that moved things like the affordable housing out of the picture, relabeled it as the mixed-income usage spaces, that have now drove in these out-of-town developers, or more importantly, Randy Boyz and his friend developers like Tim Hill and those folks instead, who have been allowed to drive the market up to increase outside of affordability of the average working-class home, family, or community member. So this resolution is really babble on paper, but y'all good at that. Hey, ask Gwen about the $100 million resolution, isn't that not a babble resolution today? I thought so. And so this continues to show the issue. As Rick Roach said, y'all can find money for everything else under the sun except for the needs of the community. Y'all can find money for the police station, y'all can find money for the baseball stadium, y'all just found money for the pedestrian bridge, y'all can find money literally for everything but this housing crisis. Everything but for poverty, everything but public transportation, everything. I mean, I could run a list of things that you all have continued to waste taxpayers' dollars on, and yet when we come to this podium, we get babble resolutions as your so-called initiatives, which is really just trash and false hope, and more importantly, kicking the can down the road. Because the reality is that we have sat here and listened to you all speak, y'all had this middle-income housing thing that y'all hosted. By the way, your boy Tim Hill, who's the director, the board of the Planning Commission, has openly admitted to Rick Roach publicly that that idea would never work. Matter of fact, it would never be implemented according to the board director of the Planning Commission himself. So, when you got people like that saying that out loud, what are you really telling us as the public at this point with these type of resolutions and initiatives that y'all so claim hosting in the first place? I mean, I've really been serious when I asked this question. What is it? I mean, I'm trying to figure it out, Knoxville. Where's the 9,000 voters, the white liberals, the Democrats? Where you at? Because we need some answers on what you all really call yourself doing, and why you continue to select such trash leadership as Andrew Roberto and others. You're not the only one, Andrew, trust me. You have several councilmembers sitting up with you who identify in the same trash manners you do. So the irony is Knoxville, this is how we got here, because voters, you put us here. And then the sad part is, you're going to continue to ask Amelia Parker to bury the weight of this entire council by herself, when she deals with jealousy and straight-up disrespect from fellow councilmembers and the mayor who's not here for herself tonight, literally, constantly on this council. And the one time that you all should have paused today to applaud her like y'all do numerous other people and each other all the time, you didn't even do it tonight. So that lets me know that you're disingenuous, you have no true value-ship in our voices and our concerns, and again, I don't know why you all can't have been apologetic, because let's be real, they played y'all once again, and I will yield my time on that. Y'all got played, and you're applauded.
All right. So, see some councilmembers who are in their lifetime, Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to first say I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this resolution. I've been talking for a long time about the need for, many of my colleagues, we've all been talking about this. I do think it is good that we have finally addressed it in a resolution form and asking the administration to do some specific work. I do think one of the things that will maybe have to be looked into is, do you have to create some redevelopment zones that allow TIFs pilots and any other incentives we can throw at it to incentivize this? And, you know, just to say that we, for a fact, that it... One is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I will say, as a banker for almost 30 years, the Community Reinvestment Act is a tool that has been used. Banks can invest with investment dollars that then can help be loaned out. We're going to be looking at all of that. So, this is not the solution, it is a part of a complex plan that has to be put in place. But I do know for a fact that there are more permits in the pipeline. In talking to planning and in talking with our COO, Mr. Rosenberg, we have seven residential complexes that are in the pipeline right now. We also, in the week of October the 2nd, we set a record with 613 inspections, so some of this, the lag is beginning to, the dam is beginning to break, and I hope that that means that the production of housing units will increase. I'm sorry, that was a roundabout thing, just to say I wanted to be added as a sponsor.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to ask Ben Bentley if he would come to the podium and just speak briefly to us of the projected housing units that are in the pipeline and what that estimated timeframe looks like.
Yeah, Ben Bentley, 901 North Broadway. So, there's a lot of inventory coming online right now, most of it is in large-scale development, some of it is actually along the corridor. I know the city of Knoxville for a long time has done a great job of trying to incentivize these types of projects. It's really great that we're emphasizing that historic work and trying to double down on it. In terms of the number of units, that's something I'm going to have to take a note for and kind of come back to the group with, because I don't want to give you bad information. I would say that there are in the thousands under development right now, but y'all know this, it takes 24 months to finish a project, and there's usually 12 months on the front end for planning, so it's not an issue that can change in terms of the market dynamic quickly. We're trying to move the needle, and this discussion's an important part of that, so...
Thank you. And then I also would like to be added to this resolution, and then also to those who have emailed and called. I have not been able to get back to everyone, but just to let you know that I did get this information, but just was not able to respond back before it went to press. But I do support this resolution, and at this point, it is not the end-all, but it is a piece of the puzzle that gets us, moves us closer to looking at different options and the support of council. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, so I'd like to point out one thing that I would like to potentially ask for friendly amendment on, and I'd like to call on Mr. Ben Bentley. a friendly amendment on and I'd like to call on Mr. Ben Bentley. On page three of the resolution in section one, it calls for KCDC and the planning staff to work together to create an inventory. Can you tell me what kind of time that would take and what would go into that?
So I know we have done similar types of processes in the past. It usually involves, you know, creating some kind of committee and working together. It's probably a 12-month process and at the rate that government moves, that's an efficient version of that situation. So the other point that I would make is typically the market is ahead of any sort of, you know, list that we can create. So I think we would potentially spend a lot of time creating this list and then I'm not sure how much meaningful impact it would have. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. And, you know, Mr. Roach made comments when he spoke about past inventories or lists that have come about, the empowerment zones. When I moved here, the empowerment zone projects were in play and that included some areas where if it were properties in the empowerment zone, there were reductions and/or waiving of building permits. I know in Indianapolis, I lived there for eight years before I came here, and some of those areas, there were tax deduct, or tax freezes and different incentives that could be added. So I think the inventorying part is not per se, I think it's something that doesn't have to be that targeted and maybe, so what's another way that you could describe what needs to be included in to expand incentives to identify areas?
I really, I think it would be wise to lean on some of the existing language that we have in the city's development priorities. I don't off the top of my head know how many of them there are, but I looked the other day and I feel like about nine of the 12 specifically are meant to incentivize corridor development like what we're talking about tonight. So some of that language might be appropriate. I don't have a specific language to offer.
Okay. Well.
I disappointed you, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I would like to propose an amendment to strike the word inventorying because I think it's going to create a lot of unnecessary lag time. For one thing, Councilman Thomas and I both work with Broadway Corridor Task Force and work with the Design Center to identify areas, did design charrettes and, you know, we didn't go through the process of creating inventories and that. So I think the amendment would be to strike the word for inventorying, or the word inventorying and say options for identifying corridor areas currently supported with infrastructure or with current infrastructure to support infill mixed use as allowed by the code. In lieu of the word inventorying in section one of page three, because I think that's going to add an additional year to what Mr. Bentley already described as 24 months, once you even say, hey, here's a property. You know, what, you know, Councilman Thomas, I don't want to speak for you, but when we worked prior to both of us being on council, when we worked with businesses and property owners along the Broadway corridor, it wasn't a matter of identifying the properties, it was a matter of the will to do things on the parcels. And at the time, we didn't have recode and then once we had recode, we just have a lot of property owners that live in other places that just need somebody to sit down with them and talk about, or they need somebody to come buy the property and develop it. So it's in private hands and they just aren't interested in doing something with it or they have a plan that is down the road, five, 10-plus years. So anyway, I made a motion for an amendment and if anybody wants to second it.
I've got a motion and I've got a second for an amendment and I do view that as a friendly amendment. You know, the intent of using the word inventory was never about any one parcel or parcels. It was really always about analyzing opportunities along the corridors. So thinking about areas, not specific projects, there's no discussion of a list in the resolution. And I would agree with you, I think if we, you know, give ourselves a lot of time to produce a list that will have its own issues, but it also takes up a lot of time. And the intent here is to talk about existing tools that we have, raise awareness about this exact same thing because this has been talked about a lot. There are examples of success here, but we need to raise it up and then like Councilmember Ryder said, get people interested in it again, get the conversations going because this is a great opportunity. I think it presents us the greatest opportunity to quickly build housing stock for all income levels. So I think that's a good thing. So I accept that as a friendly amendment, absolutely. Law Director, do we need to vote on the amendment since it's on there yet or should we complete the conversation?
You need to go ahead and vote on the amendment.
That's what I thought. Unless there's debates on the actual amendment. All right, so we're going to, we're going to vote on the amendment, okay? So if, does anyone have comments on or questions about what the language of amendment is? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Councilperson Ryder, if I understand.
There you go.
Can you hear me? Better? Great. I like these new mics. Councilperson Ryder, if I understand you correctly, you're concerned with the word inventory would slow down the process and then by the time we got the inventory completed, it could possibly be out of date.
That is part of the conversation that Mr. Bentley and I had earlier today.
Right, okay.
I mean, we don't need an inventory, you know?
Because we know where the.
We know where the corridors are.
And they do change. You know, it does change. Okay. Yeah, I'm supportive of the amendment.
Any other questions or discussion about the amendment? Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. We've talked about discussion, don't see any more, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, we are amended. No longer refers to an inventory. All right, I had other folks who signed up to speak. I think your, was your time up? Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Testament.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things. I mean, I go back to, and I think I'm hearing and most everybody concurs that, you know, this is not an either-or, it's a multifaceted approach and there have to be a lot of pieces to solving this very complex problem. And, you know, I've long said, you know, I've been a huge advocate of housing and believe in public-private partnerships and, you know, there have to be, you know, I look at Charlotte as a great model and have for a lot of years because they've gone to a lot of their large employers there, their banks, their hospitals, and they have to be part of the solution as well. I mean, they're recruiting, they're bringing in workforce and this is not just a government problem, it's got to be a collective community solution. So to that point, I guess I'm, one question, I agree with Councilmember Ryder and thank you for making that amendment because I do think about, you know, who of these entities would even have the bandwidth to do that. But I do have a question between the city, Knoxville County Planning, KCDC, I mean, now at this point, let's with, you know, I presume it passes, then who does the onus fall on to then take charge and sort of start this process, this analyzation of across the city of these properties? I don't know who to toss that to.
I'll send it to Mr. Brace.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilwoman Testament. I think when we worked and had discussions with Vice Mayor Roberto about this resolution, what is good about it, and my colleague Ben Bentley reiterated this just a few minutes ago, is this is much of what we do already. So if you look at the successes we have had up central, along Cumberland, in South Knoxville with the South Waterfront, the areas where we have good planning, we have the tools in place and the infrastructure, we oftentimes see new investment. And so again, these are efforts, I had a good meeting with Councilwoman McKenzie about how do we start to look at these tools all the way down Magnolia from First Creek at Austin all the way down to Burlington. How does that start to be planned and the infrastructure continued? And when that happens, we see the market interest in developing along those corridors. So again, I think this is work that is in a kind of a group of us. I see Mr. Hanson Sale was here previously, so the Realtors, KCDC, the Chamber, the mayor had a briefing from Mr. Odom in the Chamber, the work that Grant does as a Chamber Board Member, that Rebecca Jane does in her role, Cheryl, myself. So it's a real team effort. So I think we will continue to enhance, I should have mentioned Kevin DeBose and his work in housing. So this will be continued work, so we will continue to analyze these corridors. I know that Magnolia right now is an area that we're looking at as we start to look at that infrastructure east, Central and Broadway, Chapman. So we will continue to do that work and it'll be a team effort.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, I mean, yeah, just noted, I mean, going through the corridors too, I mean, that's often too, your highest real estate. So again, it becomes, you know, it's got to be economically feasible as well. So it's just, again, a lot of pieces moving in the right direction, but at the same time, definitely multifaceted. I'm fighting to add my name as well as a co-sponsor. But yeah, I think right step forward, but there are a lot of steps still to go.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I was happy to co-sponsor this resolution, but also have some concerns as well, especially along the corridor. The, I imagine there will be additional obstacles, additional expenses, additional barriers that limit development and that's one reason why we need incentive programs. But that makes it more likely that market rate would be the go-to and we desperately need affordable housing. I think that as this moves forward and if there are incentive programs that are established by ordinance or if something comes back before council, we would have an opportunity to weigh in on what types of projects qualify for these incentive programs, but that is my one concern, is that market rate will be easier to move forward along the corridors than affordable housing will. I did have a question for Mr. Bentley, basically if you don't mind. Just based on the conversation earlier about number of affordable housing units, I do appreciate you following up and sending us that info. I wanted to clarify one thing because I continue to hear thousands of units, thousands of units. But when I look at KCDC website and I look at the housing report from year to year, I'm not seeing thousands of units. And I know we have other programs, but just within KCDC, when we're looking at public housing, when we're looking at the low-income housing tax credits, the vouchers, all the various programs that KCDC has. What I'm seeing is that at the end of July 2020, we had 7,698 of those units and then one year later, we had 23 more units. What are the plans and the capacity of KCDC to address the shortage or the need we have for units at this income range?
So we are one very important piece to that puzzle. A couple, do I have an hour? How much time do I have? So we, in terms of our development, there will be a net increase based on First Creek at Austin and at Western Heights of, and these are long-term processes, but the net increase to publicly owned housing inventory in Knoxville is about 650 to 700 between those two projects. We don't have the capital to do everything, so we also rely on joint ventures with, in some cases, Elmington Capital, Dominion Affordable Group, there's LHP, there's a couple of others. In the last three years through those joint ventures, we've created about 500 other units that have public ownership. So at the end of the tax credit period, KCDC will have the ability to come in and potentially, assuming that we are, we continue to be managed and financially strong, make an acquisition to keep those properties affordable. The public ownership stake of those assets is critical. So that would be Young High, Young High Flats, Pond Gap and Moss Grove, which is kind of Cedar Bluffish area. We're continuing to build on those partnerships. So there's one right now that's going to be kind of across from Holston River Park that we're trying to partner with Dominion to get something done in terms of affordable units there. There's one in the north part of town. So these are happening and they're continuing to grow the inventory, but it takes, it takes too long. We want to do it faster.
And so those specific projects do not show up in these annual reports?
The reason that they don't, those are managed by the other partner, but we have through the financing structure created public ownership and our intention is at the end of the affordability period to make an acquisition or at least attempt to acquire those for perpetual public ownership and preservation.
Do we have, whether through the city or KCDC, any sort of landing page that tells us what are the various affordable housing projects in the city, all in one place?
I don't know the answer to that.
That would be extremely useful.
Yeah.
I believe for both, for city council to know what we have and what's coming, but also for the public to know as well. Okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You led right into one of my questions, Councilwoman Parker. Mr. DeBose, I think some of what has been drawn out in the recent conversation is the Affordable Housing Fund or actual dollars we contribute, but we also enable a lot of things. You know, obviously we enable KCD housing, KCDC housing, we enable subsidies for a percentage of private development so that folks that can rent in wherever they want to rent as part of multifamily housing. Do we have some of those numbers right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Can you, do you have them on hand in terms of what we've funded versus enabled and kind of a macro level view of the housing supply that the city has funded?
Yes, and Kevin DeBose, Housing and Neighborhood Development, I'll try to be brief as our team can attest, I can really nerd out on some of the numbers. But a couple of points I would like to share is there are over 4,000 units currently being supported by tax abatement. I think the number is 4,081. Low-income housing supported by pilots, it's nearly five times the number of market rate. That's something I haven't really heard. In terms of what's happening now, we'll reiterate what Mr. Bentley said. We're experiencing a boom, lot of development. Since 2019, the city has invested in over 2,100 units. Now half of those have opened up, the other half are under construction through the Affordable Housing Fund that you created. And I have those numbers, I have them by council district. It's pretty evenly distributed in terms of, you know, where we're investing in. In addition to that, you know, a growing issue while we're building new housing is that investors are targeting older complexes and flipping those. And so we have been trying to prevent that from happening when appropriate. And so there's some older complexes that we've been able to work and help keep them affordable through our rental rehab program. And there's about another 400 units of those. So, you know, combined both through the Affordable Housing Fund and the federal rental rehab program, about 2,500 units since 2019 that we've partnered on. And again, about half of those are opening. So I do think the problem is real. I do believe our response as a city team has been robust as well. We do have some work to do ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple more comments, I may run out of time. But, you know, currently, we have incentives as part of pilots, for one of those, one of our tools, and one of those, I think there are 13 priorities, I guess, Deputy Brace or Justice, one of those, the pilots, I think there are 13 priorities, and one of those is affordable housing, so it is one of the way, the criteria for what gets a city-funded subsidy, is that correct? Yeah. So it's already one of the main priorities for subsidy from the city.
Yeah, I would jump in too, that remember, and Mr. Bentley, or Kevin Dubose can jump on this, but you see all the market rate pilots that come in where we push for a percentage of workforce or affordability. The automatic pilots that go for our Lytex, those happen automatically, and I think we need to continue to report those to members of council and the public more routinely. So I know the mayor has said, hey, all of those automatic pilots that council doesn't see, because they happen automatically through a system that's in place for any affordable project that comes in with certain guidelines, we're going to start reporting on those regularly during mayor's report, and as we roll out more of our, some of our newer programs that we're looking at over the coming months.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, you know, thank council for the discussion we've had revolving around housing. I also want to, you know, think, have us thinking about into next year when we're thinking about potential workshops, potentially a housing workshop would be a good, a good approach to bring this back up again and see where we are at that point. This resolution came from a collaborative effort with the mayor, mayor's staff, with, you know, our other, you know, city staff, with private sector folks, because I think it's going to take all of us working together to see development along the corridors realized, and take advantage of the opportunities that present themselves there, where we can have, we can build more housing faster, we can use our incentive programs that we currently have in place to build in workforce housing as we're going, and be supportive of that as well. So, anyway, just wanted to highlight that, and I do think just having this discussion and highlighting this just raises awareness about these options, about the intent of council and the administration to look into, you know, mixed use along the corridors, and about the infrastructure we have there, about the incentive programs we already have, and maybe we develop new ones, maybe we come up with new outreach techniques, but all of those are a part of what we're doing here. Okay. Councilmember Smith, do you have?
Thank you. Just two quick things, I ran out of time, so I wanted to honor a rule. One is, you can please add me as a co-sponsor, didn't have time to respond. The second is, I just want to make a comment about, I think that we've all said a number of times, we can't add it fast enough, we need to add it everywhere, and this is one of the pieces of the puzzle. So I think we're all on the same page about that, the speed at which we do it, we all would like to add as much money as possible to housing, it's the number-one priority in our city at the moment. That voice has been loud and clear, and we all should respond to it. I do want to be clear that where possible, we need to also make sure that we allow these types of incentives in residential neighborhoods where renters live and want to live. So this is about the corridors, that's fine with that. I thought about making amendment, but it was, it was too messy to be friendly. It didn't have to be friendly, but it was too messy. So I may bring something soon about that. But I do think, I would encourage us, as we make all of these, all the progress we can on missing middle housing, housing in the corridors, that we don't unintentionally exclude residential incentives, because there's blighted houses that, you know, owners are vacant, or there are people that own properties in residential neighborhoods that would be happy to take a subsidy if that was available. So I would encourage us to get creative around incentives within residential neighborhoods. I think, will maybe come back before us, but Giffen Elementary School in South Knoxville is going to be registered as a historic place, but it's also going to be 100% rental units, and majority are, all will be subsidized. So, that's a great neighborhood, the South Haven neighborhood is exactly where people want to live, but may not be able to afford, and where we can provide incentives. We need to get creative within the interior of the neighborhoods. Yes, we can go through zoning changes or design standard changes, but people want to live where everybody wants to live, and to the extent they can rent there, we should make that possible. So, I just want to, don't want to lose sight of interior residential neighborhoods and the desire for everyone to live there. Corridors are great, all the other places are great, but everybody deserves to live wherever possible that they can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Incorporated for the provision of administrative services for the city's self-funded employee medical program at an estimated annual cost of $774,816.
Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
11E is a resolution, excuse me.
D.
Yes, 11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Incorporated for the provision of dental benefit programs for eligible city employees for a period of three years, with two one-year options to renew at an estimated annual cost of $575,000.
Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Gulf Coast Underground LLC for the CIPP for Stormwater Infrastructure Rehabilitation Project, increasing the contract amount by $19,374.80 for a new contract total of $893,363.65.
Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Southern Constructors Incorporated in amounts not to exceed $3,577,967 for the Augusta Quarry amenities project, Phase Two.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Southern Constructors Incorporated, excuse me.
G.
G, 11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with NSAFE Incorporated to provide professional engineering design services for the Cherry Street Quality, Water Quality Design Project in foreign amounts not to exceed $48,520.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents on behalf of the city of Knoxville necessary to acquire property for the Washington Pike Drainage Improvements Project by negotiated purchase or by condemnation if necessary in fee simple within one tract of real property for a total amount not to exceed $3,000.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents on behalf of the city of Knoxville necessary to acquire property for the Woodland Avenue Complete Streets Project by negotiated purchase or by condemnation if necessary, within 12 tracts of real property in a total amount not to exceed $650,000.
Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second, and Councilmember Testerman, your light's on.
I just have a quick question, just in looking at this, along the Woodland Avenue and those residences, and it talks about construction of final plans may vary by up to 20%, depending on field conditions and plans or visions made after meeting with property owners. What if property owners don't comply or don't want to comply with the proposed plan?
Well, under those circumstances, we can exercise the right of condemnation, should we need to do that. We put the additional money into this so that our folks who go out and negotiate for this property can go ahead and negotiate, and we don't have to come back to city council to get some very small difference in the figures approved by you all. But should it happen that we just are unable to reach an agreement within a price range that our appraisers say is a reasonable price to pay for this piece of property, then we would have to exercise the right of condemnation.
Right, okay. I just wanted to point that out for public record. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, Mr. Claybo, the drawings are a little technical. So what all do you guys plan to acquire in here, just for, you know, public discussion?
So it's basically, there's a little bit of right-of-way in-fee, there's a lot of temporary construction easement and slope easement. So when you get in these corridors that are tight, and we're trying to add sidewalks or shared-use paths or bike lanes, we have to widen the roadway, and typically, that means creating a benched area, and in this case, we're going to have to fill in order to get that in, so we have to encroach on a lot of properties to do that.
But how much are you encroaching, like five feet, three feet?
Well, the, I mean, the typical out there, it's two 11-foot travel lanes, five-foot bike lanes, and five-foot sidewalks for the majority of that. So, the existing roadway out there is two lanes, I think it's got sidewalk on one side for the majority of it.
Yeah, the sidewalk.
So you're probably talking 10 feet to 15 feet.
From both sides?
From one side, really.
From one side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
There, and the plans show kind of the touchdown point of the slope, but there are no total takes, or really, what I would say, severe impact to those properties. It's mainly getting enough room to get the width we need to get the amenities in.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I appreciate this initiative, and it's, that area there is really due for a redo, and it's not even that friendly actually for automobiles. You've got the barrier between the lanes, and you can't turn around very easy if you want to get into the Broadway Shopping Center, and then the added negative aspect is it's not friendly to the kids at Fulton High School to get across that four-lane or to ride bikes. The First Creek Greenway is not a good connection at the moment. So, I appreciate this, this can be really a good redo and make this all pedestrian-friendly. And actually, for someone who drives in that area, and bikes as well, it's not that friendly for automobiles, you know, so I appreciate the attention on this, and I look forward to solving more than one problem with one project. So thank you.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Thomas, your light's still on. Okay, just making sure. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Knoxville and Progression Electric LLC for electrical upgrades to the Enskip Pool Pump House for an estimated amount of $56,986.20.
I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend contract number C-17-0099 with Vera Mobility to extend the term for the existing contract by five months.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for, and if awarded, accept a grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for the operation and maintenance of the household hazardous waste collection facility.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to adopt the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation's policy on consultant selection for projects funded with Federal Highway Administration or TDOT funds.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, oh, I do have one. Councilmember Ryder.
Just a question. Mr. Claybo, I know this is about a process for consultant selection, but what all do we end up doing with federal highway administration funds? We get TDOT funds for all kinds of things, greenways, local streets, sidewalks, but what do we use federal highway funds for?
A lot of those funds are, they come through the federal highway, and it's administered by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, so like our gas tax that comes back through T, it's administered by TDOT and through our transportation improvement plan. So when we're talking about federally funded projects, that funding is coming through federal highway.
Okay. But just to clarify, so people know, because I've had people ask me, our engineering department maintains local streets, sidewalks and stuff, but we don't maintain the interstates that are within our boundaries?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Do we do some pothole patching?
Not on interstates. We do some on state routes, but typically, state routes are maintained.
Okay, but not on the interstate?
Right.
Okay, okay, so we're not receiving funds for that and not doing that work?
No.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, because some people think that you do, and when are you going to hurry up and get your project done? All right, thanks.
I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Edison Electric LLC in an amount not to exceed $103,719 for the electric vehicle charging expansion project.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Ryder.
Mr. Blackman, I don't know if you would like to come and speak on what we're expanding? Would be great.
Brian Blackman, Sustainability Director for the city of Knoxville. Yeah, this project is to expand fleet charging here in City-County Building.
Okay.
So, fleet's purchasing a lot of EVs, we're excited for it, but we're woefully underported, I guess. We don't have enough plugs to be able to account for all the vehicles that we have on order, so it's been a project that council approved in a budget two fiscal years ago, and we've been working through design, engineering, site plans, all that up until now.
Okay, so not publicly available?
This will not be publicly available.
Fleet.
Correct.
And that's because we're swapping out gas vehicles for electric?
100%.
All right.
Nick Bradshaw and fleet have been amazing about that.
Well, we're not 100% on our fleet vehicles, right?
No, we're not 100% on that, but you're 100% correct in your summary.
Thanks, just want to be clear.
All right, I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
12A is an ordinance to close an unnamed alley from Wonderland Lane to its northeast terminus at the southeast corner of parcel 070DD001, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners, Cavanda Chandler, applicant 4th District.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
12B is an ordinance to change the based zoning classification of property located at 3616 Skyline Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, SRI Lambodar Properties LLC, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve. Second. I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, that concludes our regular agenda, so that brings us to public forum. First to sign up was John Zieda. Is Mr. Zieda here? I don't see him, so we'll move on to our next speaker, Rick Roach. Mr. Roach, you have up to five minutes.
I want to read something referencing the city council. I want to read something referencing a city council person from Reverend Calvin Skinner. He couldn't make it, and he asked me to send these thoughts to you all. "The National Homeless Law Center headquartered in Washington DC stands as a prominent advocate for bolstering the legal rights and protections of individuals facing homelessness across the United States. With their unwavering commitment to dismantling the legal hurdles confronting homeless individuals, they tirelessly champion policies and initiatives aimed at fostering housing stability and eradicating homelessness. Through their diligent work in litigation, policy advocacy, and education, the National Homelessness Law Center assumes a pivotal role in the ongoing battle against homelessness and housing insecurity. On October 11th, Councilwoman Amelia Parker was awarded with the 2023 Local Legislator Human Right to Housing Award by the NHLC. Our own Reverend Calvin Taylor Skinner, who happened to be in DC and attended the event, shares this. 'I had the privilege of attending the event on October 11 when Councilwoman Amelia Parker was bestowed with the well-deserved recognition for her steadfast dedication to advocating for our houseless community in Knoxville. As her proud brother in the advocacy space and self-appointed fan club liaison, I watched with overflowing pride as Ms. Parker received grand accolades and sweet gestures from attendees in honor of her compassionate and thoughtful leadership. While she doesn't seek these sort of accolades, this award was an essential to remind her that Ms. Parker, that she is not alone in her mission, as she remains a crucial voice in Knoxville's precarious political landscape. I would like to conclude with this observation. As Ms. Parker shared the spotlight with extraordinary women leaders like Congresswoman Barbara Lee and Maryland State Senator Mary Washington, she consistently redirected attention to the Knoxville advocates who tirelessly contribute to this cause. In a time when Knoxville and the entire state of Tennessee make national and international headlines for less favorable reasons, it is imperative to acknowledge those individuals and groups unwaveringly committed to the moral and just path. Their radiance shines even brighter, serving as a beacon of courage and a true model for leadership. Congratulations to Councilwoman Parker, your tireless work does not go unnoticed. May this national award inspire others in Knoxville to break free from the confines of the status quo, envisioning a brighter future. We need visionary leadership as the people perish because of the lack of vision. May it embolden the people to push harder for enduring solutions to the city's most pressing needs, armed with character and courage.'" I've got a minute and a half, and I'm going to use it. Going back to 11B, again, the missing element are the people that we never see, but who make decisions, and those are the financial institutions. If they continue to act as they have acted in the past, then all your efforts will be for naught. So I don't know what counsel you keep with these individuals. I've been in some of their presence, and it ain't fun, because they don't listen, because they don't have to listen.
That's right.
Let's not, let's not play games on that. They don't have to listen because they've got this, and that's what they do. And when we play their game, they win, because they make the rules. Until you hold them accountable, okay, if you want to have some vision of what that means, then look at the ones who have been, who have violated for years, been caught, and nothing's been done about it. Okay, they might enter into a consent decree. Consent decree means you did something wrong, and this is your way of making it up. Keep that in mind when you go and focus on these institutions and the outside money coming in.
Congratulations, Amelia Parker, congratulations.
Next up is Adama Bowe.
They'll never get one, but you did. At least you can say that.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Adam Abah. I'm soon to be former resident of the Tanglewood Apartments, and just wanted to, I've been attending a few meetings, and just wanted to come up and speak about our experience. You know, first of all, I'm not blaming the city for everything that's happened as far as housing, you know, it's been an issue for us. And the biggest thing was really finding solutions and trying to figure out what happened and, you know, what we can do to help my neighbors that are getting kicked out, that don't know where they're going to be going, you know? I got, for my end, I did what I needed to do. I was lucky enough to close on a home today, so that's, that's great, I'm getting to move out. But at the same time, we have to figure out, you know, what, how to help everybody else, you know? The housing crisis, of course, people are moving to Knoxville now, so it's becoming harder and harder to get a house, but also at the same time, we have to battle investors. I've lost so many homes to cash, cash investors that bought the homes. So on that front, I wanted to talk about short-term rentals and Airbnbs, because, you know, we know from, I work in the vacation rental industry, not in Knoxville remotely, and we know that there's a thousand, close to a thousand Airbnbs, and only 300 of them has been approved by the city. And I don't think it's very hard to track that number, because they're all listed, is on Airbnb, and there's different tools where you can look up, go and look up and figure out who is renting the Airbnb, because they have it listed on the site. So I'm pushing the city to maybe find a way to kind of regulate that industry, because it could get out of control, the more homes they buy and the more investors take away houses from residents that are trying to find a home, so. So that's one of the, one of the things I wanted to talk about, and the next, and I do appreciate the, you know, the changes in the permitting to allow more housing to be built in the city for people. At the same time, you know, we want to look at funding and see if we can get more money towards housing. Now that it's a crisis, moving forward, you know, I understand some of the, some of the investment in the stadium, in the new baseball stadium, that's already too late. But on Friday, I went to talk to the UT, University of Tennessee Board, Board of Directors, and this was really about, on the rental industry side, for people that are still wanting to rent, what's causing rentals to go up is the amount of students that are coming in. I think the university went from historically being at 22,000 students to 36,000 now, and that's about 14,000 more people in the city that need housing. So, and that's what I wanted to talk to them about. They, they had an $80 million profit this year, and it's really, hey, the more students you bring, you do have to have provide housing as you're, as you're growing. So that's something I wanted to talk to them about and come here to talk about, you know, the pedestrian bridge. I know we raised $20 million towards the bridge, but it's going to cost about 50 to 60 million. And this is a university that spent $340 million to renovate Neyland Stadium, and I believe they have funds to, you know, to pay for that project themselves, and that we don't, we should, now that we're in the city and the residence and this situation, we should be saying no to giving more money to them and maybe helping the people that need housing in Knoxville. So those are the two aspects, those are the things I wanted to talk about, the housing, buying in terms of people trying to buy a house and the people that are trying to rent, you know? If there's any way to limit the growth of, slow down the growth of the university, because the more students you bring, that's going to cause an issue, and also what's the quality of the education in classrooms that are, that are packed, and what is the capacity for the school? So those are the questions I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Lynn. You have up to five minutes.
I believe everyone knows where I live now. So I wanted to mention a few things. First, congratulations, Amelia, from myself and from all my neighbors at Tanglewood and from the Knoxville Area Tenant Union. We're very proud of you and the work that you do. Second of all, I'm not sure that everyone in the council is aware, but Cat U, SOCOM, Sleeves for Needs, PSA, and AMAC are hosting a housing and homelessness candidate forum. So when we're talking about coming to the table and listening to folks' stories and meeting your constituents where they are, this is perfect opportunity, whether you're running for office or not. There will be people in the communities that you serve that have questions. Maybe we're not asking you the direct questions, but they're definitely questions we have. So I urge any and all of you to attend. It will be October 26 at 7:00 PM at St. Luke's Episcopal Church. It's 600 South Chestnut Street, 37914. Okay, second, again, or lastly, again, we reluctantly supported the 11, 11B. Again, we need to see solutions listed out. As Tom said earlier, we'll be here in two weeks, in two weeks from now. I think, I think, you guys can call me on my bluff at this point, we're going to keep showing up until things are getting done. So don't expect that this resolution has passed and the pressure's going to come off, because it's not. Things need to happen, and they need to happen quickly, so I appreciate the friendly amendment on that, but there are solutions that aren't listed in that resolution, and also just reiterating, hey, we're doing something about it, but really, we've always been doing these things, and nothing's really innovative in this resolution. So I urge you in the next two weeks to think about it and get in those trenches and do some digging and some work. If you've got questions, you are always free to contact me, and I can give you that information after the meeting. But yeah, that's, that's kind of the, the things that I wanted to put out on the table in public forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zieda, John Zieda.
Thank you. I'm back again with the Bilo store and the fire that was blamed on India McDowell, and nobody burned it but the fire department, and they know this. The last time I was here, I asked for Planned Parenthood. Mark Reno is an scapegoat that the government is using. I've got pictures of the gas valves that the government, exactly which one, I don't know, whether it was the city, the state, or any other government, but I do know that the building, the new addition, was burned, other than Mark Reno. Here is a picture of a gas valve that's in the rafters in the new addition. Here is the new addition of Planned Parenthood, and these, these devices that were used on Bilo, the store that the Palestinian storekeeper owned as my father's store, a Palestinian, both stores were burned out. I don't believe the city does that to every storekeeper in the city, but we happen to be Palestinian. I came here crawling, because that's how much I believe of what I'm talking about. Here's another picture of the gas valve, is what I call it. There's another picture. Here's three of them. Here's three of them lit. And where did I get this? From a Knoxville News Sentinel. Anybody can get it. You just have to look for it. When you see Bilo, you'll understand what to look for. Here's another one, that's a duplicate. And here's a device that's hid behind glass. Apparently, as one of the fire captains stated, it was an experiment. You put it behind glass and you light it. Once it's lit, it will amplify heat. There is a, there's a picture here with the wood burned out. I'm going to leave these here. Somebody serious about Planned Parenthood, and you might ask, why would the government burn Planned Parenthood? It's because of the funding. The country cannot afford to keep putting money out, and the federal government gave it to the states to handle this funding, around $600 million or something. It was up to the states, each individual state to take care of it as they saw fit. Nobody burned that building but the government. Which one, I don't know, but I do know the fire department knows that I'm telling it the way it is. Here's a picture of the rafters. And what you got here are devices. That's not just fire, as, as we all would think. Normally, in a normal, normal state of mind before Bilo, a person just sees fire. But when you see a Bilo, this is the walk-in cooler of Bilo. This is a camera that was put inside the cooler of Bilo, and a device, two of them, stacked upon each other. All the doors inside the cooler. Nobody, and Stan, the fire department, and the fire chief, everybody that knows the story knows I'm telling it the way it is. And Planned Parenthood needs an investigation. Never mind Mark Reno, never mind that headstone at the cemetery, I went to it. The grass is lush. The land was never turned. It was only a year old, a year and a month. It, the grass was lush. It was just a headstone with nobody under it. Here's a picture off the internet. That's three windows that's on the side of the building. Here's your gas valves. If anybody disputes me, just ask to see the arson pictures. Just ask to see it, and you'll see the truth. Here again, same picture, and again, these round circles are the devices. That is the devices, and you can see wiring up there.
Thank you, Mr. Zieda.
You're welcome, thank you.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
That concludes our public speakers and public forum, and our meeting is adjourned.
I'm going to leave these here for anybody that's interested. Is anybody interested? No? One day, you'll be on a crutch.